......
Linda Barbell.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Larry Craft.
Here.
Bill Lupin.
Here.
JR Helleson.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
David Horace.
...
... Go.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Make a motion to approve and amend the agenda removing half of the new business. Motion to adopt our city administration to initiate a tower, nuisance vehicles in accordance with City of Hot Springs ordinance ninety-five dot dot oh two enforcement and be clear. Discussion.
Aye.
I make, I make the motion to approve the minutes of the February twenty-first council meeting.
Second.
Oh, I thought.
Ten-four.
She's closer, so that's probably why. Sorry. Um, I would note that in the committee reports, the entry dates for Evans' line were incorrect. We pointed at three-nine. I'm not sure if I heard that wrong or you said it wrong, but I just want to correct that. Okay. From our last meeting.
Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Motion to approve the bills in between.
Make the motion to approve the bills in between one-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The motion passes. Motion to approve the current claims.
Make the motion to approve the current claims of one-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The motion passes. Motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims of five thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The motion passes. Communications from the public, first one is to hear from interested candidates for Ward Four Alderman to be appointed until the June, uh, June election. Anyone that likes to address the council?
Um, hello, I'm Melissa Niles. I am with Ward Four of Butler Park. I'm interested in fulfilling a position to better serve my community. I've been in my spring about five years, in South Dakota all my life. Um, I know we're going through some tough times and, and I, I don't have any agenda. I just want to help. I have no creative ideas. My background is in education. I'm homeschooling for eleven years, college school teacher before that, and a master's in management administration. Any questions?
Do you have any plans on, um, running for the, uh, in June?
Yes.
Can you run for the one-year or the two-year term?
I took application for the one-year term. Um, we did buy property up town in five years or so when we were building a house.
Melissa, has anybody, uh, told you what all the time commitments are for council?
Yes, yes, I've spoken before.
So you know what you're getting into.
Yes. And so does my family's on board, so thanks.
Any other questions? Deborah had already asked the question that, uh, I had to, uh, that you, final run for election from a one-year vacancy for Ward Four. Thank you for that. Anyone else? All right, um, so we made a motion to appoint Melissa Niles to fulfill the remaining term, not the remaining, to fulfill the term for Ward Four till next election. Make the motion to appoint Melissa Niles, uh, to fulfill the remaining portion of this term for the Ward Four council member.
Second. Well, you wasn't done, Bill, I'm sorry.
I think I was done.
I thought you still talking. Well, I guess that's Johnny talking.
Discussion. Let's do a Chocola Roll, please.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
JR Helleson.
Yes.
Linda Barbell.
Yes.
Larry Craft.
Yes.
Bill Lupin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Melanie Dash, come up and take your own office.
Anywhere you want to do it from, and then you're welcome to come to a seated table when we're all done, and. Uh, with the right hand, my feet after you. I, Melissa Niles, I will solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Constitution of the Constitution of the City of Hot Springs. I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all the duties of my office. I will base my decisions, uh, what is in the best, what is the best for the government, and citizens of the City of Hot Springs, and not on any personal gain, or not under any direct or indirect cultivation clause, or indirect cultivation clause. Congratulations. Have seat for everyone.
Welcome, Melissa.
We don't have to duck too long.
So one of the first things I'd like to do is thank you, obviously. It's important that all wards be fully represented. It's a good thing, we just definitely appreciate that. Melanie was the co-chair of the Admin Finance Committee, so I'd like to appoint you to fill that position. That's with JR, who's the chair of Admin Finance. Admin Finance is the first Monday of every month, unless it's holiday and we'll be on Tuesday, one o'clock in the morning. Right, back to communication to the public. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
I would like to. Adam Bernison. Uh, so I'm speaking on behalf of the Hot Springs Youth Soccer Association. We, uh, we have gotten donations for two sheds that we'd like permission from the city to place in Buffalo Park near our soccer fields. They've been donated by American Legion and then a partial donation from Builders First Source with funds that we have raised, um, to give us more storage location and a concession stand.
Where would you put the concession stand?
The concession stand.
We already have a building that's considered usable for a concession stand, but I suppose it's too far away from the fields.
Absolutely, that's correct. It is, it's too far of a location to, uh, have families away from their kids, parents away from the kids playing. Or I have a, a small blueprint that shows the tenant locations that have been chosen. Is that something that I can present to you guys?
Absolutely.
Does it have to be a permanent structure?
Nope, these are all sheds on skids.
Well, no, I mean the concession stand.
That would be a shed as well.
Okay.
I don't believe I have enough copies for everybody, but.
I'm not sure if you were here, Adam, when I mentioned that we have the seven-fifteen building here.
Okay.
If, or if it's a bid opening, so it's seven-fifteen, depending on, uh, questions council still has. We'll just ask you to pause, we'll go to the bid, uh, bid opening.
Absolutely.
Have you been to parks in recreation, uh, committee on?
Yes, sir, they, they have approved the, uh, the temporary placement of these.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they first, uh, they came to last meeting last month, this meeting, and they have asked those questions. Jeff, um, approved the first one. They called, you called me and asked me about the second one, and I suggested come to the meeting so that we could bring both of these together to the council, so that the council would get an idea of what's going on.
Is that, is that sketch adequate?
Oh, yeah. I see that the concession stand one is over where there is water access. Do you plan on hooking up to the water?
We would be a temporary host for doing liquid. It would not be any sort of sinks, waste, or any sort of items. It would just make drinks or wash hands. And that would be the only function when, when it's supplied.
So it's going to be right up next to the, the existing sheds?
The, the, the additional storage shed would be tail-to-tail on the existing one.
Who's going to run the concession stand?
We, as an association, we will be running it on our own. We'll be stocking it on our own.
Any other questions?
I do know that there are some issues with vandalism and breaking into sheds and things of that nature up there. Just a word of caution, not to keep anything of value after you, you shut her down and you lock her for the night, or whatever you could do. Just be, just a word of caution, that it does happen, so just take care of yourselves and make sure you don't have anything of value in there.
We understand that.
Okay, this is a, a good point to break. We're at the seven-fifteen bid opening. Uh, this won't take long, uh, because we don't have anybody that's applied for the, uh, the license. Uh, so just to let everyone know that the license is available. Uh, my understanding is we don't have to re-announce it. It's open if somebody wants to apply for it. Do I misstate that, Mr.?
No, you have not.
All right, so.
Is that a license that the city had had or is this become available that somebody else has dropped?
One that the city had had, no one dropped it. But it's patented also.
Well, we'll go ahead and close the bid opening at seven-sixteen. Back to Adam.
Can we make a vote on this, or recommend?
I would recommend you do not vote on this because it was not on the agenda. You can take the information, we can add it to the future agenda if you like.
What I meant, do we have to vote on it, or the parks are recommended, uh, it being okay, so, I mean, not tonight, but does have to come back to be voted on, or can they just do that?
Recommendation from parks is to go ahead and go with that, is, that would be my notes on that. My thought at this point, I'd be to go ahead and make the recommendation tonight. Uh, it sounds like council is fully supportive of, uh, opening the sheds out there. I'll just go ahead and put it on an agenda, uh, for the next council meeting, uh, so that it's official, if anybody wants to come back here from now and check into it and see why it's, it's happened, and get council approval to do that.
No, give me some time to check with our insurer as well, because we do insure our sheds up there, and so, do you have any plans for insuring your property separate from ours?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to just check with our insurer and make sure that we do everything right.
Could you spell your last name's, Bur?
Thank you so much for all your enthusiasm and, and actions, and it's really good to have really positive people doing the program.
Thank you. I would echo that on behalf of the city. Appreciate you folks stepping up and recognizing the need and helping to address how that can be taken care of. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
It, it makes perfect sense. I can see where you folks potentially would be having an event at the same time that the baseball folks are, and have a concession stand that caters to you folks and one that caters to the baseball folks.
The biggest reason for the storage shed is we've gone in two years from sixty kids average per season to a hundred-and-twenty.
Wow. Wow.
In two years.
I would, I'd make one note to you, Adam, not to put a damper on your parade, but if there is a emergency and you have a game scheduled, because we have a contract with, I'll let you finish that.
With South Dakota Wildlife Fire, everything except the, uh, baseball diamonds may be taken up with emergency response equipment.
Yep, we understand that.
Unless you put them in a soccer field or something.
They might need a break.
Does it not include all the baseball fields?
Yes.
What about softball too?
It's the whole park from my understanding.
It, it's everything except the fenced-in diamonds, my understanding.
Any other questions? All right, uh, Larry, sounds like you're going to address this issue during your, your parks report?
Yes.
My sense of it is the council, you have their full support. Just get it on agenda so it's official.
Thank you, Adam.
Give us an opportunity to check out the insurance also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Anyone else from the public? All right, let's go to, uh, council updates. First council update, uh, is our public works engineer, Tracy. There's an update on the road project and water, sewage replacement, okay?
Okay, well, good evening. Um, I don't know if there will be a whole lot of work that's going to take place this week with the forecast working as it is, but sooner or later, uh, spring will come, and you'll read from now on some a lot more that way. So some of the most recent things in the last month that has taken place, uh, you probably noticed that, uh, city crews were doing some work down on the corner by First Interstate Bank. Uh, we had to move a fire hydrant, um, to accommodate the, the new road, and so that was, uh, that went on schedule as planned, uh, without any surprises on, uh, this past Thursday and Friday. So, uh, that's an in-house project we took care of. Uh, the main contractors are expecting to really, I think, come about the twenty-first of the month, um, twentieth, about third week in March, we're probably going to see a lot of activity start kicking in here. Um, it is weather dependent, of course, but, uh, that's the general impression. So you're going to be seeing, uh, the concrete contractor being active, uh, the utility contractor, uh, the utility contractor, their next stage right now is to, uh, do another approximately two-hundred feet of sanitary sewer that will run from, uh, pretty much in front of what's now Polish Nails, the former, um, power company building, uh, up to, well, it's stated the station one-twenty in the highway plans. That puts it up, uh, not quite to, right in the vicinity of, uh, Menacotta Coffee, right in that area there. Uh, so that's their next stage of utilities that they're planning to put in. Um, we do want to have some discussions with them to encourage them to continue on north with the water main, especially, as, because as we all know, we've had a lot breaks that happen. So that's the discussion. Um, we don't have any specifics on when they will actually do that next stage. Um, you know, a public meeting last week, uh, there was some indication that there may be some delay, uh, on that part of it. Otherwise, I'm thinking, let's see, at the last meeting, I don't think we had discovered the octoduct yet that used to feed the, uh, the power building. Uh, that was an interesting find. It was made, uh, a couple of weeks back on North River Street. Uh, we've, there's been rumors for many years that there was this big pipe that fed water, uh, for a power turbine in the, uh, you know, in the former Black Hills Power Line Building, which originally was central electric. And, um, the only place we'd ever seen this pipe was up behind the building, up behind the, the power building, so pretty much everyone assumed that it ran behind the buildings, uh, came, came down from up by, uh, vicinity, probably around that plunge or in that area. Uh, the only other visible object that we know of that's associated with that is that large concrete box that sits across from Bronn Hotel over in that apartment block, it's got that big wheel on top of it, and that was part of the control valve system for that system. Well, come to find out, what they did, they actually routed that pipe. It's thirty-six inches in diameter, it's very large, and it goes, uh, down River Street. It goes under the river, uh, as a site, and then it goes down River Street, and what it did when it got to the power building is it actually made a ninety-degree turn, went under the building, went up, made a loop, up behind the building, and then dropped straight down into their turbine. Very ingenious, uh, against the legislation, as far as we are, dates to nineteen-oh-two. So that was an interesting find. Um, the Department of Transportation has agreed to pay for the removal of this, uh, this old pipe, because sooner or later it could collapse. It might be a long, long time, but it's three feet in diameter, so if it was ever to collapse, and it's barely below the surface of the road, so, um, that will just be an insurance against, you know, the future damage to our good highways. So that was one of the more interesting things that, uh, we came across as one of the, what I would say, surprises that, uh, was found on North River Street. There's a lot of North River Street to go, so we may indeed find more surprises, and hopefully they're not costly ones, but, uh, this was an interesting one, to say the least. I guess for now, that's pretty much the update of, uh, what's going on with the road project. Um, oh, yes, one other thing I do want to mention, I believe it's on the agenda, uh, we have a change order for a complete concrete, uh, yes, it's I V U business, and the purpose of that, it was submitted by Complete Concrete, one of the important things that we try to have contractors do is present the city, which is then, of course, brought for the council, before any potential change orders for additional work that they may have, and hopefully it's ahead, it's in front of, we're not, you know, after, we're back. And, uh, one of the things that they have encountered is, um, excessively wet soil conditions on North River Street. Of course, the current weather conditions are not helping with the future of the areas that are open, but, so this change order is somewhat preemptive in nature in that it is actually for a potential maximum quantity of, uh, wet soil if they ran into it. In and of itself, the number does not commit the city to that amount, if that makes sense. It's, it's almost kind of like, I don't really use the term credit line, but it's, it's opening up that potential, um, that we may have additional extra muck, is what they call it, excessively wet soil, that would go on through the remainder of the ducting. So I guess that's pretty much it. Any, any questions?
Is that soil, um, possibly from any other leak that has happened to go that way other than the normal weather conditions that we had?
Uh, we have some concern that some of what they already took out could have been, um, influenced by a, uh, about, a, a couple of miles that they left, accidentally left on, uh, that were for services. Um, yeah, we've had quite a few discussions on that matter with contractors, uh, and I really wouldn't say that that quantity has been completely dissolved yet.
So the, uh, kind of that I gave you, uh, complete concrete, that will be part of the discussion when we get to the change order, the gentle items, I'll provide more details at that, at that time.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, first off, that pipe does come from around the plunge, and I don't know if it goes under any more road, or they expect them to, if they hit it, take that out too?
Uh, you mean like north of, uh, like in the vicinity of the courthouse?
Yeah.
Down in that area? Uh, my expectation would be if it's under the new highway, they will take it out. It's under North River Street in that area.
But they're just, they're just replacing our water main. How are they going to know if it's under there?
Uh, it's so shallow that literally as they do the undercut for the road, if it's, hey, or it's as shallow as it is on North River Street where they currently found it, uh, they probably run into it, but, you know, it's a hundred-and-twenty years, uh, old, and I have never seen a diagram of, of anywhere of that system. Of course, it didn't belong to the city, so that would be another possible reason, you know, why there's just nothing left.
When the water comes out of the plunge, it winds right there and goes. When the water comes out of the plunge, it lies right there and goes on down that way. Question number two, did they have to take a lot of concrete out of those, those boxes on the other side for the sidewalk? Somebody said that they seemed to have taken concrete out of them?
Boxes? The cuts that they made, the foundations?
Yeah.
With penetration, so I'm not aware that they've taken any concrete out.
Somebody called me and asked me about it, and I said, I said-
Oh, you mean the grid, suspended sidewalks?
Yeah, correct.
Oh, I think probably what some have seen is they've been removing the old light bases.
Oh, okay.
And they, some of those, they have been breaking up. I'm, I think that's what it is. But no, I haven't had a report of any buried, large pieces of concrete in that area.
I just had a phone call, so I thought I'd better ask.
Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Tracy? Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have any further questions about that change order? Or do you think that's pretty enough?
I, I'm good.
Okay.
Got your number. We know where you live.
We know where you live.
Yeah, well, I would. Okay, thank you.
Our next council update is District Client Salesman McCully of the Vision Fund Committee.
No.
That's come before yours.
No, I just wanted to give you an update. First of all, I don't know any of you, do you have new ones since I presented the last kind of important? I don't remember. Anyway.
This is the one we got tonight.
No, just the new one. So just to give you a little background again, this is McCully's Vision Fund, Tom and Ann McCully. And this is what our purpose was. They're longtime residents of Hot Springs, wish to get back to Hot Springs community. So they created what we call the McCully's Vision Fund grant. And this is to support community projects that would not currently receive financial support from the city of Hot Springs. So this is a grant that someone from the community can apply for. We put a committee together, met diligently throughout the year to get this program off the ground. This is the first year that we've done this and started it. And I'm going to start off by saying thanking the members that are on that committee because we did spend some time, made a very thorough application, we feel. And obviously, being the first year, we're going to revise as needed, year in and year out. We hope to continue and see where this grows. So we're all really excited to stay on the committee and move forward. I'd like to report, we did have, for being the first year, we did have 11 applicants this year. So we met, reviewed all those, scored them. Two, what we feel, Tom and, that match closest to Tom and Ann's vision for Hot Springs. So once we came through that, I just wanted to report to the council that we did choose two, two of the 11 applicants this time around. One is to the Scout Center, and then one is with the Hot Springs Ministerial Association. And we just felt as a committee, those two out of the 11 best represented Tom and Ann McCully's vision, thoughts, ideas for Hot Springs. We're going to meet, I have to meet with Misty in the next couple of weeks. By the end of the month, we'd like to, she's just going to show me how to get these funds and present the, the ones we awarded the funds to, present it to them, and go through that process. I'll get in touch with Misty and we'll work through that process of getting the funds. And moving forward, like I said, we're excited with the applications that came in. All of them are very valid, very good projects. But it's one of those things, we can't fund all of them, so we do what closely represents Tom and Ann. Any questions?
JR, you're the council representative for that group, do you have any comments?
No, we did quite a few meetings and looked at that. We all agree with the selection that he's talking about. I think it's valuable for the city. Tom and Ann, thank you very much. Appreciate what they're trying to give back to the city. But I wish we could have given it to everybody, but we really didn't have a lot of funds yet. But we feel that it's going to grow exponentially, and that we're going to be able to do some more work for the city, or for these projects. And I think it's very worthwhile. Thanks to Tom and Ann, and thank you for what you've done in leading us and making sure we stayed on track.
Yeah, just so, I mean, I guess this part's all in the minutes and stuff too, right? Or is this, I just want to make it known to the public that anyone can apply to this one. So it just has to be within, you know, Fall River, or within Hot Springs, and just has to represent what they want. It says that all the applications, so.
The other thing, with being at the community foundation, is if there are other interested benefactors, they can contribute, and this can grow, and we can do more.
I think one question that I have, as you mentioned, the application process, where does an individual or a group pick up the applications?
So we're going to review it, we're going to meet again in the next month or two, review the application. We did come up with a few changes we have to make. But then we have, we need to email it to you, or Olivia has some down here.
Oh.
We put, we put it out on Facebook a bit that you can pick up. I think Brett ran an article for us to get it out to the public more. I'm hoping this year that we don't have to focus a ton on the application. We can look at some more of that advertising side, so it can get out a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Do we have to wait until you announce it, what the projects are going to be?
I have applications here. The Scout Center, their proposed project is, they want to transform the current Scout Center building located at 240 North Garden Street in Hot Springs into a safe and inviting place to be used for more as a community center for surrounding areas. Many different organizations will utilize this new community center, such as the Girl Scouts, the Cub Scouts, B.A. Buddy Night Veterans Group, Veteran Suicide Prevention Group, square dancing, Elts Lodge, other community clubs, groups, as an affordable option for meetings, fundraising activities. The organization's primary focus is on children and veterans, ensuring they have a safe alcohol-free zone to meet. The matching funds will be used to update the electrical heating system, new lights, new paint on the interior, exterior, refinish the wood floors, new fire panel. Most of the above project labor is being donated by community partners, which we were really, we liked this one for that fact, that it wasn't just us the only ones providing support. They already have community volunteers, community businesses assisting with this project too.
It'd be great if I could capture all those in the minutes and then mail them. It's fairway to email that.
Yes, yeah.
Great, thank you.
And then the Hot Springs Ministerial Association was, they're in the process of purchasing a building where the pantry is located, has a vision to expand services and outreach in the community. And their first, to the first part of expanding that was to buy some IT, some computers in an existing conference room for naval individuals to apply for jobs, access state federal websites, et cetera. So all of them very valuable. Felt we met, out of the 11 that we had, felt there were two that we wanted to support this year, so.
Yeah, I just don't think, sorry.
All right, all right. I will forward that. Any other questions? So like I said, we're going to continue to meet. Probably will be every month, but probably quarterly. And then toward the end of the year, we'll probably do the same thing, accept applications until January 31st. February, review the applications, and then in March, present.
You had mentioned, you know, they're going to go fly for it. And it will be on, I mean, it's video, but it's in the public watch. And of the two organizations that you chose, I think it really does mean the intent of Tom and Ann McCully, McCully Vision Fund. It reaches out to so many other people in the community that utilize these two organizations to help out. Folks, good job, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you're talking about continuing to serve. Absolutely, I'm not looking to replace anybody.
Then honestly, they, everyone that's on, they're excited to work. You know, I think that to see where this is going to grow. So because like JR said, first year, you know, not as many funds, but building is exposed, you never know what's going to, what project shows up, so.
And can you once again acknowledge the folks that make up the committee?
Just their names?
Yeah.
I'm going to put me on the spot. Jane Farrell, Olivia Myers, Kim Moore. Sorry, Kim Moore, Jennifer Cruz, JR's the council representative. Olivia.
Oh, Jen, Jennifer?
Yes.
It's Jennifer Cruz. Beth.
You didn't say Beth.
It's Beth. Beth, I apologize. I often tell this community, it's the first time I've met her.
That's the lady, the meeting foundation, that is about.
Yeah, she's been to the meetings, from the community foundation.
That's her son?
Yeah.
Not Beth's?
No. I can tell this be, that's the first time I've met her, so.
Yeah, I looked at you.
So no, they all enjoy it, they all plan on staying on and on this weekend, so.
Any questions from the public? Thank you, Justin. Thank you. All right, takes us on to personnel. We're going to motion to approve personnel actions A through M.
Make a motion to approve personnel actions A through M.
Second. Question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
It's over your extension.
Motion passes. On to our only resolution, Resolution 2023-8, the resolution to surplus, surplus city property.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-A, the resolution to surplus city property, 2019 Dodge Charger for PD.
Second.
Discussion. Chief Norton prepared a letter for you folks for your consideration. Chief Norton? Any comments? You're answering questions?
We'll have a full fleet when this is on line, am I right?
Six teams, sorry?
Yes. A full fleet for our fully staffed police department. Just want to get that plug in there. Congratulations.
Good job. And I want to acknowledge that Adam, the city mechanic, has been working with Chief Norton to get this 2016 back on the road, council. You had given your instructions to the city on how you wanted to manage the 2019 and 2016. And this addresses that problem. And Adam brought the opportunity to Chief Norton last week. So I appreciate that we're able to get this taken care of, get justification in front of you for your consideration. I reached out to each of you individually, and you indicated your support of this particular option. So I appreciate that. We initially had a concern of whether we needed to surplus the vehicle or not. And Misty had reached out to Rockford and agreed that the best way to do this is to surplus the vehicle for trade. Misty, I think you were able to set the work going on. And that's what the resolution says. Whereas the city council, what the city of Hot Springs finds in said property is not useful, were usable to the city, finds in said property should be made surplus and traded in as is conditioned. Any other questions?
All liabilities on the city is off the table once they get this and use it, right?
All liability.
Well, knowing that frame's bent and all that.
Already is ours.
I mean, if we traded off these people and they used the car.
They're, they're aware of the condition of the vehicle.
I figured they did. I just, I just want to make sure they can't come back with a city.
And the reason we took it out there is we wanted to-
Look it over?
And they took the car, straight the frame, break lines. Yeah, they know what the problems with the vehicle are. All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business I of A, discussion only to review the police department plans for the 2019 Dodge Charger. Again, we just talked about what the plans are for that, to trade it in in exchange for Phil Zaniano installing a brand-new motor with a three-year, 30,000-mile warranty. The 2016 vehicle, 2016 is already equipped. Just a new motor, Adam said it has, Adam? Didn't realize you're still with us, I'm all in.
That's fine, I'm kind of unseen here.
If you just give us, you know, a heads up on the 2016, what are you feeling about?
The 2016, in the past probably eight months or less, we put new tires, new batteries, new brakes, all high-performance police fleet packages lineup. So, I mean, the only thing the vehicle is lacking was the motive powering the vehicle.
So Adam, can I, how was, how was the transmission in the 2016?
Solid.
Solid?
Okay. It has, don't quote me exactly how many miles, I believe it was 67,000 on it. So the transmission's still technically under Dodge standards, that's still under the 100,000-mile service train. They don't stand behind a warranty because it's over three years old. So it's, it's three years, whichever sooner on Dodge's platform, it's three years or 100,000 miles on transmission. So, and, and there isn't a huge, those transmissions have been used for a long time, so.
Okay.
That's like when you buy a new car, it's 30,000 miles or 30 feet off the lot.
Yeah.
Chief Norton, we never did ensure that vehicle, but I do have title. And we did get plates, did you ever put them on the vehicle? Let's keep those, because there's something else we'll reassign them, but.
Mayor? This is, did you, do you have a copy of the letter for our new councilwoman? Or did you got the?
She got a whole packet, just like hers.
Good, 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 okay. Because I'll make sure she's up to speed on it.
And Deb's filling her in a little bit on some details.
I wrote it down. District Melissa says yes to that question.
I just wanted to make note that 16 Chargers actually updated as well by Sontec. So it wasn't some, it's just a really good car. It's really good, it's updated properly, it wasn't some side job by some guy who's done by a professional entity that, I mean, so we can just plug and play with that motor in. It's fully operational, so we're not going to worry about electronics or anything like that. There is some issues with that because Sontec, they warranty that work they've got there.
That's another thing of having this motor, that's a great motor, installed by a business, that's how we get the 15, or the, gosh, I can't even think today. Remember that, the three-year, 30,000 mile. If we would put it in as our own N.T., it would not have that warranty.
And when we talked last week, it was about giving Jared a, Jared a heads up that the council had given their verbal approval to go ahead and do this in hopes that he could get a motor ordered, get it on the way. You know, if that's happened, and how long is he estimating it'll take to get the vehicle on the road? on the road?
Uh, when I, after the approval, I spoke with him. He has placed the order. He has, I have not received any further updates from that. But he said as soon as he receives it, it's three days turnaround. He can pull that other motor. If he doesn't have it already pulled before the motor even shows up. My understanding, he would be pulling that motor prior to that coming out. So he could be ready for the fleet to be up as soon as possible.
Okay.
He has to trade that motor in with the car?
No, no. Straight up bought, he bought the motor straight out. No.
So we're gonna have the old motor so we can?
No.
He's keeping both motor?
Correct.
Any other questions? All right. On the new business item B, motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign South Dakota Department of Transportation State Highway Fund Loan Agreement. I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the South Dakota Department of Transportation State Highway Fund Loan Agreement and promissory note for up to one thousand nine hundred sixty, one?
Million.
Million nine hundred sixty-seven thousand, one percent interest for a term, I'd seen all the zeros there. For a term of ten years to be used for eligible project costs related to the suspended sidewalk, decorative lighting and asphalt repairs.
Second.
Discussion. We kicked this around for a while, council. This was the, uh, the loan that we had asked DOT about. And we went through a couple edits. Misty had some financial questions. The state was able to get it worked out for us. So this is that, if you approve it, then the state will loan us one point, up to one point nine, one million nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in one percent interest for ten years for our suspended sidewalk. And, uh, the decorative lighting and asphalt repairs on the quality and cultural intersections. Any questions? As previously discussed. Misty, which call the role, please?
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
J R Huddleston?
Yes.
Larry Crapp?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Linda Barbaugh?
Yes.
Melissa Mayo?
Yes.
Motion passes. On to new business item C, motion to authorize the finance officer to transfer back the cash.
Make a motion to authorize a finance officer to transfer back the cash previously authorized to be transferred into the Hot Springs Capital Improvement Fund Suspended Sidewalk Balance five oh one dash two six four two five. One million dollars will go back into the general fund on assigned fund balance one oh one dash two six seven zero zero and five hundred and ninety thousand to the additional sales tax fund capital replacement balance two one two dash two six five two zero due to the acceptance of future receipt of the South Dakota DOT State Highway Fund Loan for the same purpose of sidewalk construction.
Second. Discussion. Misty, can you put this in money terms for us?
Maybe with September, we were worried about how we were gonna pay for all these overages. And there's concern about what money is dedicated for what purpose. And so we knew we had a shortage in funding available for this suspended sidewalk project. In order to satisfy that, those two issues, you approve transfers of available cash from one fund to the fund that's dedicated for paying the expenses related to the sidewalk. We barked up a lot of trees trying to get help to pay for the additional expenses related to sidewalk and the utilities project. And of all the places we talked to, the DOT was the only place that offered us the solution. They can only pay for transportation-related expenses. So the things we set money aside for are the things that they could help us with the funding for. So we don't need those funds in the five oh one fund if we get this loan, which we did. We just accepted it. They offered to accept it, the loan from the DOT. So we no longer need those transfers. We still are facing added expenses related to the utility project, but DOT cannot help us. These funds cannot be utilized for that project. So we're moving back the city funds from the general fund and the additional sales tax fund that we allocated for that purpose with the intent to use these funds and potentially in the future to assist with the utility overdue with these funds will then be available again to look at as an option. Is that way enough?
Oh, yeah. Thank you very much. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item D, motion to approve cross-deputizing the city police officers.
I make a motion to approve cross-deputizing the city police officers with the former county sheriff's office.
Second.
Discussion.
Had that never been done before?
Not that much. Not far away. Many years ago, I mean, many years ago, we did. But I haven't heard much from them.
Was there a reason to drop? I would assume many time a new sheriff comes in, it's their, it's their responsibility to take upon themselves to cross-deputize the police officers when the new sheriff comes, when you reign, if you will. And if, if the new sheriff didn't do it, then that is.
So that's, that's solely the sheriff's decision?
Yeah. I mean, I support it obviously because he, I recommend it, but if he didn't want to cross-deputize, it's as if he wants to do it. It starts with him. So he's gotta make, uh, he's gotta be, he's gotta initiate it as the, as the sheriff cross-deputized and be able to assist out of town.
And it seems like that would be approved of course.
I mean, I would.
I, I think that's actually now a focus of the sheriff.
That's a long time ago.
That's what I was saying. It's been years.
I was like thirteen.
We did, we, we did that. We cross-deputized back in.
What, you do?
Yeah, back in seventy-six.
Okay.
Seventy-six.
You just gave away your age.
I'm twenty-seven and you know.
Yes.
All right. So two comments that have been raised about cross-deputizing is, is it necessary? And I spoke with the state attorney last Monday to ask that specific question. Having the police officers cross-deputized, would it help, could it potentially help him in his prosecution of cases? And he said, yes, there are situations where it could be beneficial for him to, for the police officers to cross-deputize. The other question that been raised is, a concern that been raised is by cross-deputizing, does that mean that the sheriff has some kind of supervisory authority over him? And no, it doesn't. And we've had a conversation with Chief Norton that he's the only one that can authorize police officers to lead city departments. He would have to approve every one of those requests.
I guess I just wanna make a comment that I'm sure there's speculation and thought that because this, you know, we're gonna cross-deputize, that means our presence in the city somehow increased. And that's not the case. Call-by-call basis. And it's, it's severe, it's severe calls. It's officer danger, public danger, things of that nature where our response from town can mitigate, you know, injury to, kind of life and limb to the public or to another officer. Outside of that, we're not really, you know, it's not going out in the county and stopping cars. It's not, you know, things of that nature. It's severe calls where maybe another guy, you know. As far as jurisdictional issues, you know, I, I use this, I use this example a lot. If, you know, the lone deputy in the county is an edge front and there's an assault that escaped from place I've talked about, we're five miles away. Or even if it's on a borrowed road, two miles outside of town, and we can be there in two minutes, hold down the fort until, you know, the other units get there and, you know, leave right now. We deal with competitive people. I show up outside the county wearing my Hot Springs Police Department uniform. What, what are you gonna do? You know, you don't have jurisdiction over me. It's like, well, actually, I cross-deputize the department, sheriff's office, and then you have authority.
But you also have authority through the state.
Yes. But as far as if I make an arrest, if I find a problem, cause I make an arrest and I throw the report plans, there's no question of jurisdiction or prosecution or anything like that because you have that, that I got and that team property.
So what you're looking at here is, is in cases of extreme emergency, you're looking at minimizing the response time for any law enforcement officer to get on scene.
Part, yeah, in part, yeah. You know, like, for instance, a couple weeks ago, we had a suicidal intoxicated armed subject coming down from the Moleskine setting back. And there's a single deputy working, you know, calling me, making me come, you come out here to assist. You know, and I drove out from out of junction and I waited there for ten minutes. And so I have patrolmen, I have to hand it in by my car. I can also, I also wanna stress that in any incident where a police officer leaves town, town is never uncovered. Whether that means there's two officers on one state, one go, vice versa, you know, if I'm the only person working or Phil or whoever is the only person working, they'll call me, I'll prove it, and I'll make the necessary adjustments to have town covered other than me or another officer. So I just want the community to rest assured that if a police officer leaves town to assist, the town's never, unaccounted for, it's never uncovered.
And they've always been there to back you up as well. And it's just automatic since they're former already, they don't have that jurisdictional issue or, right?
Yeah.
But it is a reciprocated professional criticism.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item B, motion to approve change order number six with complete concrete.
Make the motion to approve the change order number six with complete concrete ink. Project number two oh two one dash bill zero one P C N X zero five P. Cover additional excavation expenses due to damp soil and to extend completion date one year. Change order increases the contract price by one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars nine hundred fifty, one hundred seventeen nine hundred fifty-two thousand dollars seventy-five cents to a new total contract price of two million three hundred sixty thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-two cents. And new contract completion date will be December fifteenth of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Discussion. So I mentioned when Tracy was explaining about the rubber construction project warrants or that, I'll throw a little more details. But that's what the handout is that I gave you. We'll start on the easy side of it. And that's the completion date for the contract. The completion date was, was determined when the contractor, um, shared the new phasey for this year's construction. That getting through the, um, the metacotta section of getting on the north end of the project, it, it's that that is extending the length of the contract, not this particular portion of the change orders that are happening. The, the hundred and seventeen thousand, Tracy had talked about it, that approving this change order doesn't mean that you are instantly, um, spending another hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for this project. It's up to a maximum of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars if necessary. And that figure comes about by the, the not to exceed six thousand four hundred fifty cubic yards of muck, bad material that they can't use in the construction. Uh, if you multiply that six thousand four hundred fifty cubic yards by the eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents per cubic yard, if they needed to use the six thousand four hundred fifty yards, then the total contract change order price would be a hundred and seventeen thousand. What they've already, the work they've already done is the one thousand eight hundred forty-three cubic yards of material that they've already taken out. So that cost is the total amount that's on this sheet that I had up, the thirty-four thousand three hundred and seven dollars and forty-five cents. That's the bill that if you approve this change order, the city would be a comedian, not a hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. So to watch this going forward, Tracy and Sean or somebody from the Lawrence who are, are, are gonna be on site. Contractors aware that if you have any material that needs to be excavated, before you excavate it, you need to get in touch with the city. Let us know that it's bad material. And that gives, that gives me the opportunity to approach you and see if you wanna approve it ahead of time. To the point of, when you look at the, how they arrived at the eighteen hundred forty-three cubic yards, that the original amount they requested was to be paid for two thousand one hundred forty-three cubic yards. The three hundred cubic yards deduction, Craig, I think you had talked about wet soil. And once you remove the concrete, of course, the soil's gonna get wet. Absolutely. Contractor understands that in this kind of situation, the soil's gonna be wet. They're not asking to be paid for that surface of wet material. That's part of the construction. Uh, the three hundred yards, the discussion that we had with them is we identified that there were two curb stops that we were confident had been left on that were contributing to the wet material. Didn't contribute to all of it, but it certainly contributed to three hundred yards, three hundred cubic yards of it. So they deducted that amount from the, the original two thousand one hundred forty-three yard. So we'll continue to watch them going forward, making sure that when they identify they've got material they can't use anymore and needs to get off site, letting Tracy know what the amount of that is and what the cost of it is. So I can reach out to you and see if you wanna approve that going forward. But by having this total expected amount, we don't have to put another change order in front of you every time that happens. You've already approved up to six thousand four hundred fifty yards.
What is happening to the material that they can use? Where is that?
They have a, a spot out of Hills material that they're offloading it onto.
Is that gonna be utilized for any future? That? That you know?
Not that I'm aware of. Tracy talked a little bit about it, that they are, they are encountering, um, bad soil down there. We know that the sixteen-inch water main that they've been pulling out, they've been stacking it up on the block down across from lens. If you go take a look at that pipe that's down there, you can see that it's been leaking for a long time. And our feeling is that some of that wet material that they're encountering is because leaky water. Uh, Tracy had also talked about unexpected conditions, thirty-six inch concrete aqueduct that they're having to remove. They are encountering things that they never expected to empower under the ground. Some of this ground hasn't been exposed for over a hundred years until they run into it. It's hard to anticipate what, what it takes to.
Yes. Is there a reason why the city's paying to build on all this and why the state's not doing it? Or is the state, I mean, it seems to have been through as well.
Uh, what they're, the majority of what they're empowering is with our water and sewer. So the state doesn't need to replace the water and sewer. We need to replace the water and sewer. So that cost is on us.
What kind of material are they putting down? Are they putting dirt back down or are they putting gravel down?
Well, they're, they're embedding the sewer pipe or the water pipe, you know, in the appropriate material. And then covering that. material, and then covering that with dry soil that can be compacted, we made the compaction tests. Yes.
Has this saturated soil that they're removing, has it affected any of the foundations of the structures along North River Street?
No.
Okay.
Where they're encountering is further out into the street.
I just didn't want to see some building front fall out in the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't either.
Again, can't stress enough that by approving this contract change order, you're not, you're approving up to a maximum of one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. The current bill that complete contract would then be submitted for being thirty-four thousand three hundred and seven dollars and forty-five cents. It's on the handout that I gave you.
So, well, let's just go to the, to the Century House? It don't go all the way to police station, because that's Blue Group, should be compromised up in there. It's a different water line.
So you said, I thought you said police station.
No. This that we're doing now, paying for the soil if it's contaminated, is that just go to the Century House?
No. They arrived at the six thousand four hundred and fifty cubic yards, taking a look at eight hundred and four, one thousand eight hundred and forty-three cubic yards, and then projecting how much they have left for the rest of the project, saying, you know, if you do the math, whatever that remaining amount would be from the, subtracting eighteen forty-three from sixty-four fifty, they're thinking that would be the maximum that they would run into for the rest of the project.
The only reason I've said that is because it's a whole different water line going forth from the Century House.
Yeah. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. We remove new business item, new business agenda item F, takes us down to new business B, a motion to approve the special sale alcoholic beverage license application.
Make a motion to approve the special sale alcoholic beverage license application from CSA Doing Businesses Winter Circle for the Taste of Hot Springs event to be held at the Mueller Civic Center, eight oh one South Sixth Street on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item H, motion to approve automatic budget supplements.
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement, forty-two thousand three five hundred and thirty-two dollars, twenty-seven cents, water fund improvement other than building six oh two dash four three three five zero dash four three three zero zero and forty thousand eight hundred, forty thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-three cents to the wastewater fund improvement other than building six oh four dash four three two five zero dash four three zero zero for the sewer and water main replacement project grant reimbursement received from CDBG grant number nineteen nineteen dash one oh seven dash zero six.
Second.
Glad I'm not doing what that's in the numbers right now. And this is the reimbursement from the, for the work that they're doing related to the water and sewer fund, sewer improvement, from the, we're going to do a lot of grant that we previously have been proofing with this one and agenda item H.
It's a seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar grant, so we get draws up till we reach that amount to reimburse on us.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item I, motion to approve an automatic budget supplement.
I make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-three cents to water fund improvements other than building six oh two dash four three three five zero dash four three three zero zero and thirteen thousand five hundred and two dollars and thirty-two cents to the wastewater fund improvements other than building six oh four dash four three two five zero dash four three three zero zero for the sewer and water main replacement project grant reimbursement received from CDBG grant number nineteen nineteen dash one oh seven dash oh seven.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item J, motion to appoint council member Deborah Johnson.
Make a motion to appoint council member Deborah Johnson to represent the city during the two thousand and twenty-three Consolidated Board of Equalization Meeting.
Second.
Who are we going with?
My, Craig.
Mr. Craig?
Yeah, we'll be quick this one.
Discussion. Deborah, you're on board?
Um, yes.
Thank you.
Remember that, why come complain to the county?
Well, I did this last year, so I've kind of gotten a little orientation to what's expected.
How long did it actually take?
I'm only allowed to vote on the ones that are in the city. I'm not allowed to vote county ones.
The ones that are involved on the city.
Well, it depends, I was only there that day. It just depends how many people have an issue that they brought forth with a complaint.
Based on what our parents, do you think a lot?
I'm thinking it might take a while.
Do you have first-hand?
So I'm allowed to vote on this, or do I need to?
I have first-hand knowledge, or how long I've been with it?
What's that?
You have first-hand knowledge on how long I've been with it?
Not overall, but I don't know, we might be first-hand in the past.
I don't remember these things. I don't care. I don't remember.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item K, motion to approve a travel training request from Finance Officer Misty Summers Walton to attend the Black Hills Area Finance Officers Association quarterly meeting in Hill City, South Dakota on March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
I had to take a breath.
Well, congratulations on being the president of the group.
This will be my second go, because that's the first go of the year. Thanks.
Second go, Elton.
It's not that hard. It's a great group, I'm happy to be part of it, they're very helpful. I love these meetings, thank you for.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And new business item L, motion to approve a travel training request from Public Works Engineer.
I make a motion to approve travel training request from Public Works Engineer Tracy Bastian to attend Western South Dakota Hydrology Conference in Rapid City, South Dakota on four twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Discussion. Tracy said it's been a while since he's attempted his training, so he's hopeful for the opportunity. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And if you will indulge me for a minute, I just want to check and see what our weather's doing before we figure out where we're going to go next. We've got an executive session, I'm really not quite sure how long it's going to go. I'd like to defer our committee reports, so if we end the executive session, not going to have a city administrator report, Misty typically takes her time all the time.
I'm willing to, we're going.
You're willing to go.
Thanks.
Okay.
Unless somebody has questions, not anything.
So as far as a mayor's report, I don't have a mayor's report, but I do have something that I would like to share with the public that I've already shared with council. I gave them a handout that was sent to the city of Hot Springs from the Springs Senior Center. So I'm going to read their letter for the public. City of Hot Springs, sure, three North River Street, Hot Springs. Hello, Springs Senior Center and I would like to thank you so very much for your donation of the four thousand dollars. That's, as you notice, usually a budget and item, but the fact that our needs are considered by the city of Hot Springs is so beneficial to our nonprofit organization. Despite our efforts and the generosity of board members and a few senior center members over the last few years, our fundraisers have brought in very little. As time goes on, it seems that it's becoming more of a challenge to keep our senior center functioning. Thus, we appreciate your seemingly unenvied generosity. Again, we extend our gratitude for your good art donation. Best regards, Sandy Swetson, Treasurer, Secretary of Treasury, Springs Senior Center. So council, Springs Senior Center appreciates the recognizing that you were able to help during this last question segment, so thank you for that. Since we're not going to have committee reports, if you want to go in, basically, we made a recommendation from Parks and Rec to go ahead and check him out, we actually did that. Yes? Thank you for that.
All right, with that, got a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion, we go into executive session, and I forgot the code, hang on.
Let it go, Johnny.
Well, I put my paper away, because I didn't have a reward to give. In accordance with South Dakota codified law one dash twenty-five dash two, three, legal.
Second.
Discussion.
Second was from Bill. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? For the public, there won't be any action taken after the meeting?
We'll catch him in the floodlot.
Be careful out there.
Good buddy.
And now, we'll use this meeting, this room for the executive session, so just need to ask you to step outside. And Misty and Garland, if you can stay a foot. Are we on?
Yep.
Okay. So, Caroll's got us back on the video, I've got us at eight fifty-nine, so why don't we go ahead and back in session at eight fifty-nine, and we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Y'all drive safe.
Good evening, have a good one.
Drive it like you stole.